I call out a recess Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on petition 24 P 1625 Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC's request for special use permit to construct and operate a private pipeline in the county. If somehow you're listening to us and are scrambling to find the Zoom meeting information, the ID number is nine one five three nine two three nine one five four and the password is two zero nine eight four zero. If you want to view us on YouTube, go to your computer, cell phone, use your browser, go to www.youtube.com. In the search bar, type Lee County IL, IL short for Illinois, Zoning Board of Appeals. Don't worry about upper or lowercase. Find the session date, presumably you'd go there because you want to listen to us this evening, June 17th. And click on it and there we should be. All right, the, at the, this is session number three. At the end of session number two, the parties, the petitioner and any interested parties were given an opportunity to present evidence. The petitioner is the only one that presented the evidence. Interested parties were given an opportunity, but no one did. So the evidence was closed. Closing arguments, public comments were heard. The only public comment came from the petitioner. So we move to the last stage of the proceedings, which is the zoning board of appeals findings of fact and recommendations. I should note, present in the courtroom are four members of the Honorable Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, Chairman Forster, Vice Chairman Burrow, Mr. Pratt, and Mr. Phelan. Zoning Officer Henkel is present as is IT Specialist Jonathan, Court Reporter Kelly, and myself. On Zoom, do we have anyone? No Zoomers, not even Boomer Zoomers, but no Zoomers at all. All right, the floor is open for motions, gentlemen.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals herein after ZBA, our zoning board, finds that on May 22nd, 2024, Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC herein after simply Amoresco petitioner applicant or developer, which is wholly owned by Amoresco Incorporated, a Farmingham, Massachusetts based renewable energy asset developer, owner and operator entity, filed an updated petition with the Lee County, Illinois Zoning and Planning Administration Office, number 24 dash P dash 1625, requesting a special use permit to construct and operate a Lee County jurisdictional 4.3 mile portion of a total 6.3 mile private pipeline herein after the pipeline project or development to transport commercial grade renewable natural gas within a 30 foot wide corridor totaling approximately 15.64 total acres herein after the project site, development area, or leasehold area, laying under the surface of 14 separate parcels, those being property index numbers, PENS, number 12 dash 14 dash 12 dash 200 dash 007, number 12 dash 14 dash 1 dash 200 dash 005, number 12 dash 14 dash 01 dash 100 dash 003, number 12 dash 14 dash 01100 dash 002, number 12 dash 14 dash 01 dash 100 dash 005, number 18 dash 08 dash 35 dash 400 dash 002, number 18 dash 08 dash 35 dash 300 dash 001, number 18 dash 08 dash 34 dash 400 dash 002, number 18 dash 08 dash 33 dash 400 dash 001, number 18 dash 08 dash 34 dash 300 dash 006, number 18 dash 08 dash 34 dash 300 dash 008, number 18 dash 08 dash 34 dash 300 dash 014, number 18 dash 08 dash 33 dash 400 dash 005, and number 18 dash 08 dash 33 dash 300 dash 001. All zoned Ag One, owned by seven different entities and under three public roadways, Red Brick Road, US 30, and Illinois Route 26, all within Marion and South Dixon townships, beginning at the city of Amboy's northwest boundary on Red Brick Road, then a bit over point two tenths of a mile north along the east side of Red Brick Road, and cross it underneath Red Brick Road and continuing about point five of a mile on its west side underneath and to the north side of its intersection with US Route 30, then including a one half mile hexagonal deviation around and underneath Route 26, a bit over 3.3 miles west to its intersection with the east side of Dutch Road, and then about point three miles north, terminating at the Kinder Morgan Incorporated, KMI, an energy infrastructure company specializing in pipelines, interconnection where it would be metered and injected into KMI's natural gas pipeline network.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second? Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
One of the questions I have is the approximately 15.64 acres. I don't remember that being anywhere that-
That's a calculation, just multiplying 30 feet wide.
That's your, that's your calculation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna say I don't remember that being presented as testimony.
You can take it out.
Well, I, I just wonder where it come from. You may be right. I don't know.
Any other board member? Comments? All right, I'll call for the question. The question is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Pratt so ably read it. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. The motion is unanimously carried. Next, floor.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the Lee County ZBA finds that the following, finds that the following submission of the initial application, proper notice of the filing of petition and the impending June 10th, 2024, ZBA hearing was published in the Dixon Telegraph and Amboy News on May 25th, 2024, and Lee County Zoning and Planning Administrator, Ms. Alice Henkel, sent United States post-service certified mailings of the same notice to real estate property owners whose properties would be adjacent to the proposed development boundary, and letters to the city of Amboy, which municipal boundary lays within the statutory 1.5 mile jurisdiction limit, and supplemented the notices above. By way of an agenda, included the hearing information on her department's page of the Lee County website, and tacked the same agenda on the county board chairman's bulletin board in the old Lee County courthouse, and physically posted a copy of the notice referenced on May 23rd, 2024, for along the proposed pipelines routes at US Route 30's intersection with Red Brick and Dutch Roads.
Your motion, before I accept a second, may, may I offer a friendly amendment before a second? Ms. Henkel pointed out that she did not run, the evidence was not that she ran the notice in the Amboy News. I carried that over from the petitioner sending its community notices to both the Amboy News and the Dixon Telegraph, and she did not. So if you'd accept a friendly amendment to delete Amboy News-
Delete Amboy.
Before a second, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Anything, your motion, so anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
I have none.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Phelan so ably read it. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. That motion is also unanimously adopted. Next.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that the hearing was initially announced by Chairman Bruce Forster on the evening of Thursday, June 10th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the former courtroom on the third floor of the Lee County, of the old Lee County courthouse, and under the authority provided by its own rules, prior to actually initiating the hearing, the ZBA engaged the services of Tim Slaven, a retired circuit court judge, as the facilitator for the proceedings.
Before I accept a second, would you accept another friendly amendment? And this one, it's, June 10th was a Monday, not a Thursday. That came from me trying to get ahead of the curve and starting to draft this when we were initially set on Thursday, whatever it was. Accept that. All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir, looks good.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Burrow so ably read it. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. That motion is unanimously adopted. All right.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that the first portion of the public hearing regarding the petition for the special use permit was for your Lee County ZBA to accept testimony, hear arguments, and receive public comments, and that, and that first stage portion began on June 10th, 2024, and concluded on June 11th, 2024, after approximately three total hours of hearing time.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Pratt recited. It, adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. Four in a row. All right, have at it.
Your Honor, the Lee County, I make a motion, the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that throughout the hearing process, there was no longer any mandated COVID-19 safety measures in place for public gatherings as the ZBA hearing, and there were eight interested parties that personally appeared within the hearing room, all on the initial evening, and none on the following one. And additionally, through the us, auspices of the Lee County IT Department and Lee County Zoning Officer, Ms. Henkel, interested parties were also given the opportunity to remotely and virtually participate in the process by video or teleconferencing on the Zoom platform through the use of a computer, cell phone, or similar device at a location of their choosing. Furthermore, interested parties could remotely view and listen to the proceedings in near real time or later in the recorded mode on a YouTube feed, also courtesy of the Lee County IT, IT Department and Ms. Henkel. And lastly, the entirety of the proceedings were taken down by a certified shorthand reporter and subsequently transcribed. Those transcripts of all testimony, arguments, public comments, and ZBA debate will and continue to be available on the zoning and planning webpages within the Lee County website.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
I have none.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as recited by Mr. Phelan. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. Motion is adopted. The ball's in your court. Back in your court.
Mr. Facilitator, I move Lee County ZBA finds that over the course of the first stage, everyone, the petitioner and interested parties, were given a complete and fair opportunity to be heard. Each was given the chance to present evidence, including witnesses and exhibits, cross-examine the witnesses of others, and to present a closing argument, statement, or public comment, either orally or in writing.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Burrow just read it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice, excuse me. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. That one is unanimously adopted. Back to you.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we, the members of the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, find that we heard or read all of the evidence produced and examined each of the exhibits.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got the second. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion that we, the members of the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals, find that we heard or read all of the evidence produced and examined each of the exhibits. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. Another winner, unlike the Cubs. Okay, back to you.
Your Honor, the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that four people took the witness stand, were placed under oath or affirmation, and testified. Those witnesses, in order of their appearance, with a very brief summary of what they had to say, were as follows. Ms. Alice Henkel, Lee County Zoning and Planning Administrator, laid the foundation for the admission of her exhibits and the notice processes for the instant ZBA hearing. Mr. Nichols Polk appeared on behalf of the applicant. He is a project manager for Amoresco Inc., with 11 years' experience in the pipeline industry, the last three months of which has been with Amoresco. He testified in some detail about the proposed project, its routing, landowner easements, technical elements, scheduling, present and intended compliance with the Lee County ordinances and local benefits. Mr. Steve Hall also appeared on behalf of the petitioner. He is a senior project manager for Amoresco Inc. He added to some of the technical details of the collection and processing of the product from the Lee County landfill in, to the proposed private pipeline. Mr. Andrew Galone is a civil engineer with Civil Engineering Consultants, herein after CEC, an independent contractor of Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC. He expanded on some of the agency permit, permitting processes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as so well read by Mr. Phelan. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Back to you, gents.
Mr. Facilitator, I move Lee County Zoning Board of Appeal finds that the following exhibits were admitted into evidence by the facilitator and considered by the board. Zoning Officer Exhibits, ZO number 1A, petitioner, Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC's petition for special use filed May 3rd, 2024. ZO number 1B, petitioner, Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC's petition for special use filed May 22nd, 2024. ZO number 2A, Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals Notice of Public Hearing. ZO number 2B, Community Meeting Notice. ZO number 3A, Copies of Certified Mail Receipts to Adjacent, to Adjacent Landowners for ZO number 2A. ZO number 3B, Copies of Signature Executed Return Receipts in the vernacular Green Cards for ZO number 3A. ZO number 4, Copy of Dixon Telegraph Publication of the Lee County ZBA Notice of Public Hearings. ZO number 5, Dixon Telegraph Certificate, Certificate of Publication for ZO number 2A. ZO number 6A, A Copy of Notice to the City of Amboy Planning Commission from Lee County Zoning Officer Alice Henkel. ZO number 6B, Copy of Notice to the City of Amboy from Lee County Zoning Office Alice Henkel. ZO number 7A, Copy of Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals Notice of Public Hearing Posted on the corner of US Route 30 and Red Brick Road in Lee County. ZO number 7B, Copy of Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals Notice of Public Hearing Posted at the corner of US Route 30 and Dutch Road in Lee County. ZO number 7C, Copy of Lee County Board of Appeals Notice of Public Hearing Posted on the old Lee County, on the Lee County Board Chairman's Bulletin Board on the third floor of the old Lee County courthouse. ZO number 8, A Copy of Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC's Three-Ring Biodeer Application Filed in Conjunction With and in Support of Its Petition for Special Use Permit. ZO number 9, A Copy of Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District's National Resources Information Report for Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC's Petition for Special Use. ZO number 10, Copy of Email from Katie Smith of the Illinois Department of Transportation to ZO Henkel Acknowledged Receipt of Notice of a Public Hearing on June 10th, 2024. Petitioners Exhibits. PET number 1, Copy of a Meeting Notice for a Community Outreach Meeting on April 16th, Including a Distribution List of All Entities Owning Property Within 1,000 Feet of a Project Boundary, A Shaw Media Order Confirmation, and Amboy News Certificate of Publisher. PET number 2, Copy of a Letter to Civil Engineering Consultants from Illinois Department Natural Resources. No Other Party Introduced Any Exhibits.
All righty. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? All right, hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion, the long motion Mr. Burrow just recited. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. Motion is carried. Back to you, guys.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that Mr. Nicholas Polk of Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC was the only person to avail himself or herself of the opportunity to make a closing argument or public comment.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow? I mean, Mr. Pratt.
No, no, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Pratt just read it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. Motion is adopted. Up and, up, up and away.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that it was revealed through the testimony of its agents and witnesses that the purpose of the project is to purchase the landfill gas emissions, LFG, from the Lee County landfill located within the city limits of Amboy, Illinois, clean and processed it into 92% plus high British thermal unit, HBTU methane, at its pipeline system. Wait. I, back up, I'm sorry. Let's go back to HBTU methane and its compression and processing facility and deliver it to the National Natural Gas Pipeline System through an underground pipeline to KMI's interconnection on Dutch Road, and the developers' agents indicated that if approved, Amoresco intends to plan, develop, and operate the project and does not expect to sell it.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Phelan read it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. Once I spell it right, the motion is adopted and we can go forward.
Mr. Chairman, on point 12, I move Lee County ZBA finds that according to an agent of the petitioner, the minimum useful life of the projects would be 20 years.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing that, Mr. Burrow, any comments on your own motion?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion, whether or not the Lee County ZBA finds that according to an agent of the petitioner, the minimum useful life of the projects, I'm going to change that to seeing of the project- would be 20 years. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. Motion is adopted. Back to you.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that through both its application and the testimony of its agents, that the components of the proposed pipeline would be a steel high-pressure three-and-a-half-inch outside diameter, 4.263-inch inside diameter, natural gas pipeline, compared to interstate distribution pipelines of 24 inches to 26 inch diameters, with an allowable operating pressure of 800 pounds per square inch, carrying natural gas on a day-to-day set pressure of 500 pounds per square inch, with an impact radius of 98.81 feet, determined by a federal regulation mathematical formula taking into account a theoretical point of failure, the diameter of the pipe, and the maximum allowable pressure. Routed through a permanent easement 30 foot wide for a total of just about 16 acres along its path, not including an additional 20 to 30-foot temporary construction easement. It would be buried a minimum of six feet below the surface, bored under roadways and sensitive areas such as waterways and wetlands, otherwise trashed, and during construction and development and area of disturbance, the amount of ground that would, will be disrupted during construction of a bit over 31 acres, directly connected to the Kinder Morgan Distribution Pipeline on Dutch Road.
Would, would you agree that, that, that what you read was, what you said was 3.5 inches, but the, but the pipe is 4.5 inches?
Did I say 3.5?
I'm pretty sure that's what I heard.
Okay, yes, it is 4.5.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Pratt so well read it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody's opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion is adopted unanimously, and back to go.
Your Honor, the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that through the testimony of its agent, absent unforeseen circumstances, there would not be any necessity for any temporary construction or permanent access roads within the county zoning jurisdiction, but if there were a need for temporary access roads, they would be 30 feet wide, dugout to six inches deep, and filled with crushed gravel according to IDOT regulations.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
None.
How about any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Phelan just read it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote's going to be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion's adopted. Next.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Lee County Z B A finds that through its, both its application and the testimony of its agent, there are no plans for any permanent ancillary building structures or above-ground appurtenances, appurtenances within the pipeline easement route.
Uh, second.
Yes.
I heard two, uh, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
Judge say.
Appurtenances.
There we go. I knew it didn't sound right.
Any other board member comment? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Burrow just read it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. And onward and upward.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County Z B A finds that about nineteen months prior to that time, on October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, the Lee County Board Chairman signed into law a new private pipeline. Herein after pipeline are simply P P ordinance passed by the county board number ten dash twenty-two dash oh oh three, which would then be the provisions most specifically applicable to the petition at issue.
Wait, here a second.
Second.
Got it, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion is so well read by Mr. Pratt, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion is declared adopted. And we can go to the next.
Your Honor, I propose the Lee County Z B A finds that also in place at the time the petition was filed were certain provisions of the Lee County ordinance, performance standards, ten dash fifteen dash one E T S E Q and special exceptions, variations and non-conforming uses, ten dash two B dash one E T S E Q, which unless supplemented by the new pipeline ordinance would also be applicable.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Phelan just proposed it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. It is a winner. Gents?
Mr. Chairman, I move one point eighteen. The Lee County Z B A finds that either prior to or during its hearing, the applicant provided the following. Sufficient information about itself as an entity. Sufficient pipeline location map, sufficient description of the project. Sufficient description of materials being transformed through the pipeline. Application forms and permits from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources State Ecological Review. Sufficient wetland floodplain evaluation and the composite consisting of an application to the Army Corps of Engineers FEMA firm and waters delineation maps, a water delineation report and U S Corps of Engineers wetland determination data report sheets from the Illinois Historical Preservation Review, from the U S Fish and Wildlife Service, copies of negotiated landlord, landowner easement agreements, all of which appear to be executed. A sufficient decommissioning plan.
I'm going to call recess real quick, um, off the record, you want to check the last thing, Mr. Burrow?
Check the what?
Check the last thing, I want to go to your binder and.
Oh, the last point?
I think.
To the, to the summer, the all?
Oh. That, well, all these are going to be up for review as far as I know, I mean, I didn't bring my, didn't have my paper where I checked, so I'll go on by memory.
I think you'll.
The decommissioning plan?
No.
Uh, copies of the negotiated landowner easements agreements.
Think you're going to find, most of them are just blank copies.
Yes, we didn't have them, that's why I was looking like.
I, I.
So does that, were you implying that these are it or not?
I didn't say that.
Okay.
We're off the record, I, that's what I said was, I think you'll find if you look at them, some of them are signed and some of them are blank.
Oh, that's what we didn't know. So some are executed?
Yep.
Okay, I was of the opinion or assumption that without seeing them, that they are all done. Okay.
Fair enough, I just can't let that one go by, it's, it's, it's too important down the road.
Um, okay.
So you want to, back on the record, let's go back to, uh, well, go back to the U S Fish and Wildlife, uh, let's see, yeah.
Yeah, from U S, from U S Fish and Wildlife Services, next point, copies of negotiated land or easement agreements, some of which appear to be executed. A sufficient decommissioning plan. A sufficient recitation of the construction installation process, boring and trenching. Existing condition site plan showing the following. A sufficient showing of existing property lines from the exterior boundaries and including the names of adjacent property owners and current use of those, of those properties. A sufficient showing of the location of ordinance.
Off the record. We go back to the last one, and I'm not trying to set traps for you, I, I didn't know how much you read it. I think, I don't think, now, I could be wrong, but I didn't find a map that showed any adjacent property owners and what they're, what they dedicated their land to.
I agree.
I, I suspect they're all agribusiness, but it doesn't say, there could be recreation land, I don't know.
Okay, adjacent land.
So back on the record.
Yep.
Let's start at.
Existing conditions.
Yes, please.
Not including landowners, okay. Existing condition site plan showing the following, sufficient showing of existing property lines from the exterior boundaries, but not including the names of existing adjacent landowners and current use of those properties. Uh, sufficient showing the location of the ordinance, minimum pipeline impact radius referred to in the application is type B gathering class two buffer. Um, a sufficient showing of the existing public and private roads. Um, you guys are just going to have to, if there was anything that I, because I didn't go back and check all these and add the widths and associated easements, I don't recall those, but not including widths and roads associated, but, uh, contour, sufficient contour.
So you're, you're putting in but not including?
Yeah.
Okay.
But not including the width of the roads and associated easements. Uh, sufficient contour map showing topography at approximately two foot intervals of the project site. Uh, sufficient showing existing vegetation listing general types, but not including an exact percentage of coverage. A sufficient showing of waterway streams and rivers. A sufficient copy of the current FEMA map. Showing a map sold according to Lee County Soil Service supplemented by similar information in the section of Lee County Soil and Water Conservation Districts hereafter, here and after L C, L C S W D, W C D. Natural Reforces Information Report dated June tenth, twenty twenty-four. A sufficient showing of surface water drainage maps only from topographical maps provided. Um, I don't, an insufficient showing to, of and to the possible subsurface drainage lines. Um, sufficient existing pipelines and utilities showing of sign locations and the elevation proposed pipeline is not applicable.
Oh, wait a minute, I got, I just got lost.
Yeah.
I, I'm crossing off as you're going along, what'd you say about sign locations?
Hmm. Oh, showing a sign locations? No, I don't, it, I wasn't familiar with that one.
Then, then insufficient?
Well, unless somebody knows different, I didn't read all of her, yeah. I don't know if they're on there or not. Um.
So insufficient?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, sufficient proposed development site for the private pipeline showing the following, the proposed location of the pipeline, proposed location of all above-ground facilities, but no location of any proposed taps. Uh, sufficient standard manufacturer specifications recommended installation methods for the major equipment for the underground facilities. Sufficient proof of natural resource review consultation with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, I D N R through the department's online E C O C A T program. Nothing was titled with agency action report, but there was a, uh, a sufficient response from I D N R which obviated the need for our representation to adhere to any and all requirements or recommendations by I D N R as I D N R concluded that any adverse effects were unlikely.
Very good, that was a tough one, um, do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
Uh, I'm open to any suggestions or whatever that.
Yeah, well, your, your, your comments first, and then we'll see if anybody's got any. Hearing none, uh, other board members, comments?
Uh, I do recall in the testimony, the gentleman from Maine, refer me his name.
Um, Hall, I think that was.
Mr. Hall did, because there was a question, I believe I had, would there be any above-ground checkpoints, he said no, but there would be, the only thing sticking up above the ground, if I'm loosely quoting him, would be signs placed along the route of the pipe indicating that it would be in the ground. I did not read this cover to cover, but I do recall that in his testimony.
Okay, so that'd be under.
But, but, but read the motion Mr. Burrow's proposing.
A sufficient showing of sign location.
Right. Not just that there were signs.
Oh, they just said they were going to be signed, they did not.
Your ordinance says they have to describe sign locations.
Okay, I, I missed.
And I'm not arguing, I'm just, there's a fine.
Yeah, I understand.
You're saying, you're saying that's insufficient?
Well, I'm not saying anything, you guys decide if it's.
The motion was read, um, as insufficient, and I think that should stand going over what we just discussed.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Burrow had to laboriously go through it. Adoption.
You're not going to reread it?
No. I just reread the short ones when I get a little, little zoned out, um, not that one. Um, adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed by name. Thank you, Mr. Burrow, that was tough.
Yes.
Onward.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County Z B A finds that the proposed pipeline development has been located, designed, constructed and operated so as to avoid and if necessary mitigate the impacts to wildlife to a sustainable level of mortality.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in, um, sorry, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt, any, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will put the question, the question being put is whether Lee County Z B A finds that the proposed pipeline development has been located, designed, constructed and operated so as to avoid and if necessary mitigate the impacts to wildlife to a sustainable level of mortality. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed by nay. Motion carries.
Your Honor, I move the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the applicant's agent represented that it adhered to the standards outlined that will be in an agricultural impact mitigation agreement here and after A I M A, addressing soil retention and restoration issues.
Um, maybe before I get a second, would you mind a friendly amendment, I think I left out a word there, just unintentionally. Would it, would it here, that okay with you? Instead of adhere, just.
Do you want me to reread that quickly?
Would it here, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a second with that?
Again.
Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Any other, uh, board member? Hearing none, put, um, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County Z B A finds that an applicant's agent represented that it would adhere to the standards outlined that will be in an agriculture impact mitigation agreement here and after A I M A, addressing soil retention and restoration issues, adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. Motion is adopted. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, on point twenty-one, I move Lee County Z B A finds that an applicant's agent testified that it was understood no topsoil could be removed, stripped or sold from the proposed pipeline site pursuant to or as part of the construction of the pipeline and that it was an obligation to minimize the disturbance of prime farmland by construction, operation, deconstruction of the pipeline by consistently engaging in good engineering practices.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Okay, um, hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as advanced by Mr. Burrow, adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. That motion is also adopted.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County Z B A finds that in its application, petitioner committed, if the special use was approved to repairing or restoring all drainage tiles damaged during construction and deconstruction to the same or better condition as to when construction began and to contacting local drainage districts before the start of any construction to locate drainage district tiles and provide the county of Lee with documentation of con, of the contact prior to issuance of a permit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as, uh, read by Mr. Pratt. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote will be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay, it's a winner.
So, Your Honor, can I ask a question before we start on twenty-three? I, I would, the difference between a variance and a deviation. I didn't quite follow that.
Well, we're getting there. Well, a variation, as I understand it, I mean, I can't give you legal advice, but I, I think I can go this far, under your code, a variation comes under bulk, um, bulk regulation, thank you. So it's, it's, a variation is confined to things that can be dimensionally defined within six feet of a setback, uh, garage fifteen and a half feet high instead of fifteen feet high.
Yeah.
Um, of, of, a variation is not every time you deviate from the ordinance. It's only when you want to do something physically, you can, you can measure, you can weigh.
That, I, that, I can, I understand that, but then, so then why on the first one did you state a variance from the ordinance? Seems like that one also should have been a deviation from.
Where, where, where are we?
Sorry, the first paragraph, the first permit road use and repair agreements, but in the petition requested a variance from the ordinance.
Well, that's what they requested. They didn't.
That was their, that was their wording.
That was their word.
I see, okay.
Whenever they use that word, everything goes, we all get all, a Twitter painted because variance requires other things.
Right. Right.
We'll get there.
Okay, continue on.
Your Honor, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that either prior to or during its hearing, the applicant, the applicant did not provide the following application forms and permits. Road use and repair agreement, but in its petition requested a variance from the ordinance that such be provided to the Lee County engineer prior to the issuance of a building permit. Storm water management plan and drainage permit from the Lee County engineer, but impliedly suggested a deviation from the ordinance to doing the same in the future. From the Illinois Commerce Commission, but impliedly suggested a deviation from the ordinance by indicating in its application to submit the same prior to construction of the pipeline. From the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, but impliedly suggested a deviation from the ordinance by indicating indic, is that a typo?
Yep, I got two. Indicating, oh, oh.
By indicating in its application to submit the same once the SHPO approval was received, which occurred on June.
Oops.
And I don't have the rest of that date.
Was it the first night or the second night?
It was the first night, wasn't it?
Maybe it was, yeah. He said it, he had received it.
Tenth?
Yeah.
I believe it was the tenth.
Sorry about that. What happens when you do this on Father's Day? Okay, sorry.
Which occurred on June tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. From the Illinois Department of Agriculture, but impliedly suggested a deviation from the ordinance through its agent indicating on the witness stand that the, that at the request of a group an AIMA was in process. From the Illinois Department of Transportation, but impliedly suggested a deviation from the ordinance through its agent indicating in its application to submit the application for utility permits prior to the issuance of a special use permit. County and township road crossing permits, but impliedly suggested a deviation from the ordinance in its application to provide the same prior to the issuance of a special use permit. Private utility agreements, but impliedly suggested a deviation from the ordinance and its application to provide the same prior to construction.
The next question is going to be, what's a deviation? Well, Alice and I put our heads together and she preferred the word deviation. So, guys want to use a different word, fine, but, uh, do I hear a second to Mr. Phelan's motion? Hearing, hearing a second, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
I have none.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Phelan and, uh, sort of corrected as we went along. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed by nay? The motion is adopted. Have at it.
Mr. Chairman, I move Lee County ZBA finds that prior to the submission of its application for a special use permit, the petitioner organized and hosted a community meeting by providing notification of said meeting to be held on Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, which was at least forty-five days before the opening session ZBA hearing beginning at six PM at Amboy Community Building, two eighty West Wasson Road, Amboy, via regular first-class mail on April first, two thousand and twenty-four, which was at least ten days prior to the said meeting, to the Lee County Board, Zone Administrator, Administrator, the Township Board of the affected township, and all the persons who own real estate within a minimum of one thousand feet of the proposed pipeline project boundary as cited in the application for special use permit, and ran written notification in the Amboy News, the Dixon Telegraph, in their editions of April third, two thousand and twenty-four. And its agent testified that between fifteen and twenty people attended all or part of that event where they were given an explanation of the project's anticipated construction schedule and the decommissioning plan, the depth of the pipeline, but apparently not the site plan.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Got it. Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, we quit.
Yeah.
So it, it was published in the Amboy News, because in the second.
That's what he said, and he also submitted, I think, in his exhibit a certificate of publish.
Okay, so it actually was.
Right. Where I got mixed up was I thought they were both, but, but it was both the notice of this hearing and the community meeting were both newspapers.
Okay.
But I, I conflated the two and made them the same.
Got it.
Um, at least that's my memory of the, and I can show you the exhibit for them. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Phelan? No, Burrow. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That one's in the win column, too.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner represented in the testimony produced and in its application that it would comply with any applicable local, state, and federal regulatory standards, including but not limited to the Illinois Gas Pipeline Safety Act.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Pratt. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion carries. Next.
Your Honor, the Lee County ZBA finds, I move that the Lee County ZBA finds that in its application, the petitioner wrote that the project does have an executed AIMA, but an agent of the petitioner testified that an AIMA was in process and a copy of an executed AIMA would be provided to the zoning officer.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Any, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Phelan, adoption requires a vote by majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor, uh, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is also adopted.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burrow?
On point twenty-seven, the, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that in his testimony as agent of the petitioner provided to provided the maximum allowable operate, provided that maximal allowable operating pressure and nominal diameter of the proposed, proposed pipeline. And in his testimony, an agent of the petitioner appeared to correctly calculate proposed pipeline's ordinance-driven impact radius to be ninety-eight point one eight feet, and that such impact radius is obviously less than one hundred and fifty feet. So the more restricted of the two possible impact radiuses is a hundred and fifty feet, and thus, under the Lee County ordinance, one hundred and fifty feet would be the impact radius of this proposed pipeline.
Do, uh, hear a second?
I'll second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
Oh, that first sentence. Agent's history provided. What should the next provided?
Well, I crossed off did not provide.
Okay, okay, because we had, yeah, because I had a black and two reds. Okay, gotcha.
Okay, any other, uh, okay, any, anything else, Mr. Burrow, first?
No.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read, as, as offered by Mr. Burrow. Uh, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That motion is adopted.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the Lee County ZBA finds that an agent of the petitioner did testify that it would follow all local, state, and federal guidelines for signing and marking an underground pipeline and its apprentices.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Pratt?
No, sir.
All right, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Pratt. Excuse me. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority, vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay? Motion's adopted.
Your Honor, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner indicated through the testimony of one of its witnesses that no security cameras are planned within the proposed development, nor were any other security measures contemplated.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other, uh, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Anything, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as offered by Mr. Phelan. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion is adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I move Lee County ZBA finds the performance standards and bulk regulations listed in section ten dash fifteen dash one, lighting of the Lee County Code shall be suspended for a private pipeline and the following regulations shall apply instead. Aye. Lighting is provided at any above-ground facilities. Lighting shall be shielded with a full cutoff fixture to minimize light pollution on adjacent parcels. And the petitioner's agent testimony was that while no lighting is planned at the proposed development, if any would be installed, it would be shielded with a full cutoff fixture to minimize light pollution on adjacent parcels.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Got it. And anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion proposed by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay? It is also wears the olive brand, the olive hat. Um, next.
Your Honor, the, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that an agent of the petitioner testified that it understands that the only outdoor storage of materials, vehicles, and equipment allowed under the Lee County ordinance is that which directly supports the construction, operation, and maintenance of its proposed pipeline.
The, um, second.
Second.
Got, Mr. Pratt, anything you want to say about it?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Pratt. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. This vote will also be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion is, I put it, also adopted. Onward and upward.
Your Honor, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that an agent of the petitioner testified that it is understood that if the special use was granted, construction activities could not commence any earlier than six AM and would have to be discontinued no later than nine PM within point two five miles of any non-participating landowner unless a waiver is obtained from such a landowner.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
Should that say, uh, Monday through Saturday?
It's up to you. I mean, that's.
Doesn't the county code state that it can't be Sunday?
The pipeline ordinance is different.
Pipeline ordinance is different, okay, just checking.
Remember, it, it reads all, Monday through Sunday.
Just checking.
Now, my, my memory is he said Monday through Saturday, hopefully, he added the word hopefully.
Yes. That is all.
Um, second, second.
Sir.
Anything you want to say? Oh, that was your comment on your own, wasn't it? Yeah. Um, any other board member comment? All right. Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that an agent of the petitioner testified that it is understood that if the special use was granted, construction activities could not commence any earlier than six AM and would have to be discontinued, discontinued no later than nine PM within point two five miles of any nine, non-participating landowner unless a waiver is obtained from such a landowner. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Motion is a winner. Yes?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, on number thirty-three, I move Lee County ZBA finds that as previously noted in its application, the petitioner presented a decommissioning plan in an attempt to ensure that if the special use for the pipeline was granted, it would be properly and safely decommissioned after its useful life, including flushing the pipeline with inert gas, preferably nitrogen, cleaning the pipeline with pig devices, disconnecting the retiring pipelines from product supply sources and/or the next word, in something abandonment of pipeline. Is there another word in there?
In, no, it's, in sight two means onsite. That's the word your ordinance uses.
That's Latin. I didn't have that. Abandonment or pipeline property or reuse and alternate processes and for pipelines located in public rights away, full removal, and site reconstruction.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Hearing a second, anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow? Any other board member? Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Burrow offered it, adoption requires a vote by the majority, the vote be by voice, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay? Okay, trying to do another one.
Your Honor, the Lee County ZBA, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that a petitioner's agent represented in his testimony that Ameresco would obtain and maintain a current general liability insurance policy as follows. Covering bodily injury and property damage and naming Lee County as an additional insured with limits of at least two million dollars per occurrence and four million dollars in aggregate with a deductible of no more than five thousand dollars. And including coverage of Lee County, Illinois, its officers and employees and landowners identified in the special use permit as additional insured on the general liability policy on a primary and non-contributory basis for both ongoing and completed operations. And with a minimum of three years extended reporting period for all claims made policies. And a commercial liability policy naming Lee County, Illinois, its officers, employees as additional insurers with a waiver of subordination and that for any commercial umbrella policy, it would be a following form. One, and a, and a current commercial auto policy of at least one million dollars. Workman's compensation insurance in the following amounts, one million dollars per accident. And for occupational disease, one million dollars per employee with a policy limit of one million dollars. And pollution liability insurance in the amount of five million dollars per policy. And that all policies will contain more than a thirty-day notice of cancellation.
Um, do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow? Or Mr. Pratt?
I don't have, I'm assuming these are correct numbers. I didn't check this one out, so I'm assuming. I don't know if either one of you guys were any, checked it out.
Okay, any other board member comment? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Pratt. All, um, adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay. Motion carries. And it is not all about me, and I know that, but I gotta take a break. I'm getting a little. I'm sure Kelly could use one, too.
So how many Latin classes do you have in Morrison?
Uh, four years.
Morrison.
We'll restart now. The floor is back to you, gentlemen.
Who's the last one?
I think I was.
You were.
Your Honor. It'd help if I turned the microphone on. Your Honor, I move the Lee County zoning Board of Appeals finds that an applicant's witness promised to execute a written document obligating it to defend, indemnify, and hold harmless Lee County and its officials from and against any and all claims, demands, losses, lawsuits, causes of action, damages, injuries, costs, expenses, and liabilities whatsoever, including but not limited to reasonable attorney fees arising out of the acts or omissions of the applicant concerning the operation of the private pipeline project. Without limitation, whether said liability is per missed upon either contract or tort actions or other related claimed legal theory.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as uh, offered by Mr. Phelan. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is in the win column. Next.
Mr. Facilitator, I move that on point thirty-six, the Lee County ZBA finds that through the testimony produced, there would be noise during construction from trucks and earthmoving equipment and but none during the pipeline's operation.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay. The motion is carried.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that the performance standards and bulk regulations listed in chapter thirteen landscaping shall be suspended for a private pipeline.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. I will ask Mr. Pratt if he has any comment.
No comments.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as uh, proposed by Mr. Pratt. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next.
Is that me? Your Honor, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that through a combination of its application and the testimony it produced, the developer has stated that if proved, actual construction of the proposed pipeline would occur over a period of three months. Planned to occur during the months of September through November with the proposed construction activity occurring between the hours of six AM and seven PM. Hopefully, weekly, Monday through Saturday, and that other than the three-months construction period, when there would be twenty to thirty personal vehicles daily and five heavy-duty trailers weekly, there would be little to no effect on traffic conditions in the area of the proposed development.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion proposed by Mr. Phelan. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The motion carries. Back to you guys.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that the zoning and planning administrator, Ms. Alice Hinckel, submitted a valid Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District Natural Resources report which opined the route parcels composed of soils with a severe limitation for the corrosion of steel and shallow excavations and related that no wetlands are within the route of the proposed pipeline and is outside the hundred-year flood plain. And noted that a hundred percent of the routing is composed of prime farmland soils. Calculated the total lease scores of the parcels would host the proposed pipeline at between thirty-five and two oh three and recommended the use of onsite detention for stormwater runoff.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
I got a question of, of explanation for you or someone. Um, there are no wetlands within the route. However, they talked about, um, drilling under any wetlands. But that was just.
This doesn't say there are none. It says the report says there are none.
Okay, okay. That's what was kind of confusing because they talked about drilling under them. Okay, that's all.
Not until I read the report on Saturday, I knew what it said.
The report that they had done by this company, I found where it says that there's four wetlands.
That's what.
Going approximately point one six four acres, but this is from the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District, so they didn't find it.
You guys want to check that, but I.
No, that's fine.
And I looked at the map and there was some marked on the maps, too.
Well, but. Let's look.
Yeah, okay.
Elsa, if you got it at your fingertips, I got it. Yeah. Are we off the record? Off the record. Thank you.
Well, my experience dealing with this, if there was some, they would let them know right away.
Who would let them know?
Soil and water. Soil and water. And I think based on my experience, I think drilling under them, it wouldn't be a problem, but they, otherwise there's certain things you have to do.
They would. Growth from four. And that's different than hydroxyl soils, right?
Yeah. Because that's part how they determine a wetland is, hydroxyl soils and vegetation.
About three or four things. Of course, it's a hundred and ninety-nine pages. I can't put my finger on it right now.
Yeah, there's about ten pages. For of engineer, wetland determination data sheets.
Four wetlands and two streams.
In that report?
Thirteen, they said thirteen. Not on that report.
Hmm?
That's on the C E C report.
Oh.
We don't have that report, I don't think, do you?
I know.
Yeah, there it is. Thanks, Alice. Um, on page three of the soil, it says the National Wetland Inventory Map identifies wetlands on zero acres or zero percent of this parcel.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, I.
Sure words.
I was only reciting what it said.
Yeah.
Before we go back on the record, Kelly, where, where, where did we leave off? Please.
If we get a second.
Yeah.
Just a minute, Kelly's going to tell. Somebody asked a question.
But we were in discussion.
Still off the record. Who, whose motion was?
Mine.
Okay. All right, back on the record. Okay, Mr. Burrow, this is your motion. Do I hear a second, first of all?
Second.
Based on the off-the-record discussion, Mr. Burrow, do you have any comments about your motion?
No, I think we are correct.
Any other, uh, board member? Very good. Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Burrow proffered it. Um, adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted.
Your Honor, I make a motion. Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that pursuit to Section four-dash-ten-dash-one-D, the Performance Standards and Bulk Regulation listed in Section ten-dash-fifteen-dash-eight, fire and explosion of the Lee County Code shall be suspended for a private pipeline.
All right, do I hear a second?
Sorry.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Brett? Thank you. Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as Mr. Pratt proposed it. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Okay.
Your Honor, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that through both its application and through the testimony of a witness showed that it had reached out to the fire department, having jurisdiction over the pipeline's run over which Lee County has zoning authority, i.e. the City of Dixon Fire Department, and in conjunction therewith, developed an adequate fire protection and emergency services plan, which was included in its application.
Thank you. Do you hear, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as offered by Mr. Phelan. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The motion is adopted. Yes?
Mr. Facilitator, I move Lee County ZBA finds that the developer has shown in its application and through its produced testimony, it or on its behalf, independent contractor Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc., herein CEC, initiated a review consultation with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, IDNR, through the department's EcoCat program on March sixth, twenty-twenty-four, which results indicated the presence of the Amboy North Railroad Prairie, Illinois Natural Area Inventory Site, and the Earl and Olive Bothy Prairie Natural Heritage Landmark may be in the vicinity of the project, project location, but no record of any state-listed threatened or endangered species, and also requested a consultation with the United States Department of the Interior Fish and Wildlife Service, which indicated that six federally protected have the potential to occur, occur in the area of interest. The Indiana Bat, and the Northern Long-eared Bat, and the Tricolored Bat, and the Whooping Crane, and the Monarch Butterfly, and the Eastern Prairie Fringed Orchid, and filed an application for a permit with the Department of Army Corps of Engineers, the response to which was that the proposed project is a non-regulated activity, does not require such a permit, and made a request of the Illinois State Historic Preservation Office, SHPO, for a formal review, and that in a letter dated June tenth, twenty-twenty-four, SHPO recited its determination that no significant historic architectural or archaeological resources would be affected within the proposed project area.
It, it's mostly just scriven rare, but do you mind my adding the word species after endangered?
No.
You do, or don't mind?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that based on testimony heard, other than probably during construction, there would be no detectable vibration associated with this proposed development.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr.?
No comments.
Brett, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that based on testa, based on, oops, on testimony heard, other than probably during construction, there would be no detectable vibration associated with this proposed development. Adoption, that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted.
Your Honor, I, I move the Lee County ZBA finds, based on the testimony heard, that other than during construction, there would be no particle air pollution or emissions from this proposed private pipeline development.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as offered by Mr. Phelan. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. I think I heard enough ayes. Next, and I find it adopted.
Mr. Chair, I move on point forty-five, the Lee County ZBA finds that, based on the testimony heard, there would be no order associated with this proposed pipeline.
Second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that, based on the testimony heard, there would be no order associated with this proposed pipeline. Adoption, the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. It is in the victory column. Next.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that, based on testimony heard, the proposed development would not emit any electromagnetic magnetic fields.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Pratt?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as just offered by Mr. Pratt. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Adoption, adopted. Next.
Your Honor, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that, based on the testimony heard, there would be no glare or heat associated with this proposed pipeline project, except possibly during construction.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as recited. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move Lee County ZBA finds that, based on testimony heard, other than human waste generated during the construction phase, there would be no particularly identifiable toxic, noxious liquid or solid materials generated by this private pipeline development, and the developer indicated that the aforementioned human waste would be handled by tortipides.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as read by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And I heard plenty of ayes. It's adopted. Yes.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that, based on the evidence heard and application, application submitted, there would be hazardous materials associated, associated with this proposed project, more particularly the biogas mostly composed of methane being moved through the proposed pipeline, perhaps remnants of liquid oil, and that the petitioner pledged to handle such materials in accordance with the more restrictive of the Lee County Code, federal or state law.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comment, Mr. Pratt?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I will, I will put the question, the question being put is whether the adoption of the motion is, is read by Mr. Pratt. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. Then vote be by voice. All those indicate, in favor, indicate by saying yes.
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 All those opposed, nay. Adoption, it's adopted, as we're paying attention. Next.
Your Honor, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that, one, the character of the land within the project's parcel of the proposed development is presently agricultural row crop, with, two, an unknown productivity index.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, anything you want to say, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Anything, any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Phelan. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Next.
Mr. Chair, I move Lee County ZBA finds that there was no evidence of whether proposed development would or would not have an effect on nearby property values.
Um, do I hear a second?
Second.
Having said that, or heard that, Mr. Burrow, anything you want to say?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion, whether this Lee County ZBA finds that there was no evidence of whether the proposed development would or would not have an effect on nearby property values. Adoption, the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Another in the winning column.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that during the testimony of a petitioner's agent, there was no consideration given to the Lee County Comprehensive Plan.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr.?
No comment.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Pratt. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Oops. Next.
Your Honor, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner's agent testified that the following would be benefits to the Lee County community if this proposed special use was granted: cleaner air by reducing emissions from the county's landfill, and the production of renewable energy, and an increase in local commercial sales during construction, and five full-time jobs during the life of the pipeline's operation, and thirty full-time jobs during the pipeline shutdown, with preference to local labor for certain tasks, and Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC's participation and final contribution to local end of, financial contributions to local events.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing that, Mr. Phelan, anything you want to supplement?
None.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Phelan. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted. It's all yours.
I move Lee County ZBA finds, based on the easement forms provided in the petitioner's application, that participating landowner would financially benefit from the proposed projects.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Burrow?
That's just on second-hand information, since we haven't seen that, and I understand there's no dollar figures given, so, yeah.
So, so-
It's still testimony, I guess.
But I would submit that we cannot find, based on the easement forms provided in the petition, that they would receive any-
It's up to you, because I didn't see them. It's just second-hand information.
Which is what I've looked at. I would say that we cannot find that there is going to be financially benefit.
Well, the, the, okay, but the motion on the floor is that-
Right.
So.
Right.
And, and if that's defeated, you're free to make-
Vote against it. Yeah.
Any other board member?
Anybody remain for it any other way?
Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. So, we're clear. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds, based on the easement forms provided in the petitioner's application, participating landowners would financially benefit from the proposed project. Adoption, that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nay.
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 Motion is defeated. Is there another motion? Okay. Now, next. Floor's open, gentlemen.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that regardless of any possible economic benefits, its decision to recommend or not recommend approval of the petition is based only on the criteria in the Lee County ordinance.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Pratt?
No, sir.
Any, any other board member? Excuse me, hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Pratt. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion carries.
Your Honor, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that an agent for Amoresco Lee County RNG LLC testified under oath or affirmation that the petitioner would be around by any and all proposal, would be bound by any and all proposals, promises, statements, and representations in its application for a SUP, or made under oath at the public hearing before the Lee County ZBA, even if not expressly specified herein or therein.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Phelan, about your own motion?
None.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as just proposed by Phelan. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Next.
Mr. Facilitator, I move Lee County ZBA finds that the petitioner has requested a variation from the provision of the Lee County Ordinance four-dash-ten-dash-one-E-point-one-dash-O-dash, or, excuse me, dot-O-dot-I, requiring that all road use and repair agreements be provided, be approved by the applicant, and the Lee County Board prior to the hearing on the application for a special use permit, and instead is asking that the road use and repair agreements be approved by the Lee County Engineer before any building permit be issued.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. That motion is adopted. Next.
Your Honor, I make a motion, the Lee County ZBA finds that this request is not in the nature of a variance as outlined in Section ten-dash-NB-dash-one, but is instead a deviation from the ordinance as, as the approval would occur after the special use permit would be granted, and it would shift the burden of approval from the elected county board to the appointed Lee County Engineer.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Bur, uh, Mr. Pratt?
He stays clear of my question earlier.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether, on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Pratt, adoption requires vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted.
Your Honor, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that the Amoresco's proposed special use would not have any significant effects on the character of the neighborhood and the surrounding properties.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question, the question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that the Amoresco proposed special use would not have any significant effects on the character of the neighborhood and surrounding properties. Adoption, that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Next.
I move Lee County ZBA finds that the proposed special use would not impose any negative effects on public health, public safety, or, and/or general welfare.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
After public, I think the, the comma should be deleted. Public health, public safety, and.
Thank you.
That's all.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion that the Lee County ZBA finds that the proposed special use would not impose any negative effects on public health, public safety, and/or general welfare. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor and to keep by saying aye.
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 Opposed by nay. Motion is adopted.
Your Honor, I make a motion. The Lee County ZBA finds that proposed special uses, proposed special use would not have a material effect on traffic conditions.
Second.
Mr. Pratt, anything you want to say about your motion?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put, I'll put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that the proposed special use would not have a material effect on tra- on traffic conditions. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted.
Your Honor, I move the Lee County ZBA finds that the proposed special use would not have a significant effect on public utility facilities.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it? Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll pu- put the question. The question being put is whether the Lee County ZBA finds that the proposed special use would not have a significant effect on public utility facilities. Adoption of that motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Onward and upward.
Mr. Chairman, on point sixty-three, I move the Lee County ZBA finds the proposed private pipeline project does not carry with it any apparent environmental concerns.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is whether the Z County, Lee County ZBA finds that the proposed pipeline project does not carry with it any apparent environmental concerns. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote will be by voice. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Next.
Your Honor, I make a motion. The Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that Amoresco's petition for special use be approved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say about your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Or, Mr. Pratt?
No, sir.
Every time I hear Craig's voice, second. All right. Any other board member? Comment? Hearing none, seeing none, I'm going to put the question. The question being put is whether Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that Amoresco's petition for special use be approved. The vote will be by roll, indicate by saying aye or nay, opposed, yeah, aye or nay. Mr. Forster?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye.
Mr. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. Phelan?
Aye.
Motion carries. Floor's still open, only a few left.
Your Honor, I move the Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, a condition be that application or submissions of any attendant permits from the following agencies be made and obtained prior to the issuance of a building permit. The Illinois Commerce Commission, the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, and executed AIMA private utility agreements and permits.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Anything you want to say, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Phelan. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay.
Mr. Chair, on point sixty-six, I move Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, conditions that before a special use permit is issued, county and township road crossing permits be obtained, copies of all completed executed easement agreements and options.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comment on your own motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as proposed by Mr. Burrow. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Give me just a minute, please. Okay, next.
Your Honor, I make a motion. The Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, the petitioner be required to provide the Lee County zoning and planning office with evidence of having done a drain tile survey before a building permit is issued.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Anything you want to say, Mr. Pratt?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as suggested by Mr. Pratt. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
By nay. Motion is adopted. Yes?
Your Honor, I move the Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is allowed, while the petitioner's suggestion that a decommissioning plan be approved by the Lee County engineer, a part of the executive would otherwise be acceptable, but because the ordinance requires approval by, by the same.
Oops.
By the.
Of the same.
I was going to say. Of the same by the Lee County Board, the county's legislative body, a condition be that the decommissioning plan should be approved by the Lee County Board before a building permit be issued.
Very good. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got it. Any thing you want to say, Mr. Phelan?
None.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is on the adoption of the motion as corrected, read and corrected by Mr. Phelan. Adoption requires a vote by the majority. Vote be by voice. All those in favor and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Motion's adopted. Yes?
Mr. Chair, on the last motion, number sixty-nine, I move Lee County ZBA finds that thereafter, your ZBA consider its findings a fact and recommendations over the course of one session on June seventeenth, lasting about two hours in total.
I second that.
All right, I got a second. Anything you want to say, up, Mr. To your motion, Mr. Burrow?
No, sir.
Any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll put the question. The question being put is, as offered by Mr. Burrow. Adoption of the motion requires a vote by the majority. The vote be by voice. All those in favor and to keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The floor's open for any other motions, gents. Hearing none, seeing none, I will declare the findings a fact and recommendations stage over, and I turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you again. It's a pleasure being with you. It really is.
Thank you.
Like seeing you guys.
I think the only thing we have is, we need a motion to adjourn until, recess until after the county board meeting. July third at seven P.M. We have a motion?
I make a motion to recess until July third at seven P.M.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.